Get them to decide later, when we're ready to.
What's next week?
It's a virtual conference.
So does I miss March two.
March, oh yeah. Do you want to bring this back to the next meeting?
Yeah, once I read over it, I might be interested. At this point, I'm just kind of unsure.
Table it to the next meeting? Okay. All right, stars. They're definitely busy group people.
We'll grab them three times.
What have, what has the town given? Sorry, I was gonna, motion. A second motion, but I didn't record it in minutes. Okay, our motion is started discussion.
Second.
Teresa, date discussion.
Did we give anything in town?
Yes, the poll asking.
This, this actually should go to budget, I would think, myself.
I thought we did it as a budget, did we do it as a budget item?
As when I'm letting, I, I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, they have some, you know, they're asking for $2 per capital, that type of stuff.
So that would be like on my phone for the 911, it would be like a search warrant? Or is it just a donation?
Put it towards the town.
It's called a pick, it's budget.
Also there.
But I can't remember if we did it as a budget or if we did it as a levy loss.
That's why we're trying to push it towards a budget.
$2.
It's, it's per capita, it's $21.66.
And unless we want to go with that.
I think, is that what we did? No, because I think that makes sense, we just figured out what it would be for town and that's what we did is we just approved it, just sent that motion.
Okay, per capita, a $2 per capital.
And Susie says it's $21.66.
And I believe we just wrote a check for that.
And that just kind of put a budget to me.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of that? Okay, 9.1 is Public Works Monthly Report. Motion?
How much?
Make motion.
Second or?
Second or? Ray?
Yeah.
Any discussion on it?
I, I just have one question for chairman. Well, we talked at one time about possibly having boxes for sand or sand available for the public. Where does that seem?
I haven't done anything on that file at all. We can, I know what Dustin was saying, at this time of year, all our sand is kind of frozen up. But I could probably bring this back to Dustin and discuss it with him and see if he will.
Just a question on the first day of the pressure course, where is that being held? Is that here in town?
Southeast College in Asinaboy.
How come we're doing it in Asinaboy and not in town? Because we, don't we have trainers in town?
We have a few, but they're hard to get a hold of. Nobody seems to want to do it for three people. And this is the college, the college contacted me, said they had a course.
Well, they had a course offered for them?
Yeah.
Were, were they asked though?
They phoned me.
No, no, were, was the three people that do first aid here asked?
No.
Just wondering. So the college is putting on a course?
And are we, is it costing us more money to send them over there?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
If you want, I can contact people here. I'm not sure who they are anymore.
Betty Hawkins and Collette.
Don't steal.
And I don't know the third one.
She actually doesn't go on this one.
Do you know the third one?
No, I don't, no, I just, I, I knew Betty Hawkins was taught first aid.
And Crystal did.
Yeah, yeah, contact the ones in town, is they available?
It saves the travel costs?
Yes.
Yeah, Crystal, she was involved in mine.
Yeah, yeah. But they may not, they may not want to do it for three people, which would make more sense going to Asinaboy. Because the cost for three might be higher.
All in favor of the report? Museum 9.2 Motion Report. Motion. Teresa, second or? Call, discussion. All in favor, exception or report? 9.2 is rink closure. Motion to get it on table? Andre, second or Ray? Any discussion about it?
I don't think it's always really, it's not, I don't believe it's really being utilized a whole lot as it is now, yeah. And there won't be any games, so.
What's she lost?
For the public, you know?
Well, yeah, because they're doing quantum. They're renting it quite often, so it's busy.
At this point, there's no games?
No.
The games are all?
No, they're just doing sessions, long sessions.
So, where'd this come from? Like, how, did we just accept it?
It came from crazy.
Okay.
That's usually when it shuts down.
Oh, is it?
So it's not?
Is that when you usually shut down or is it bigger?
No, it's usually, it's usually later because hard games.
If, if they're in finals in some, some leagues, we'll stretch it out, but normally if there's no finals in league enough, that's the day.
Yeah, it's five months, right?
Get any further than that, I guess.
It's expensive. All in favor of the accept? Three? Okay, SCR report, 9.4. Oh, sorry, motion? Out of motion. Second or?
Second.
Deanna? Discussion? I just have some questions on Deanna, if you don't mind. The pool now, so we're still following certain, like, we can be open at this time?
Be open?
Only if the equipment is ready, though? You're not sure.
So, Leo is putting the sound filters in. It's going good, he says. He's, just has to drop them in there. He's painted it, like, it's been kind of updated, upgraded. It's really just the sound filters that are the, the holdup right now, I guess.
I think, was that the new grant that we, models and trip looking?
Yeah, and it can operate. Actually, a pool can have the most amount of public in it. It can have up to 100, as long as social distancing can be provided. And you can run lessons and you can run courses. It's just, it'll just take a little bit longer and spaced out because it can't all be at once, right?
So, are we passing just the report or are we giving a motion to, the way it opened early?
I believe it's just the report.
That's just the report. There's the next one for.
So that's ineffective enough to say open early, is that?
No.
No?
Um, the next one, I think, is early.
Dark or, oh, okay, sorry. 9.4.1 Appleflex Center.
This one can approve.
Yeah, brought it there.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I thought we were gonna do.
Motion on the table?
Hold on.
Sam, second or?
Which option are you moving the sand?
Oh, yeah.
To?
Option one?
Or two? Oh, I just thought we were going to discuss the whole.
We, we are, and we will.
Yeah, okay. Somebody else is ready, go ahead.
There's nothing under two, so.
Yeah, I'm in favor of number three. It's safer. Yeah.
Option one?
Yeah.
And I have a second or? Teresa, discussion. What's the advantage of going the extra two weeks?
Honestly, it's the advanced courses option. We have a lot of youth that either didn't get a chance to obtain the courses that they need to be lifeguards or instructors, or didn't get a chance to recertify, and we can't be running until they have.
Can you book them for that time period then, as you're saying?
Well, it'll start at that time period. I mean, it takes anywhere from 36 to, to 38 hours per course. I do have instructors for all courses that are needed by lifeguards and instructors lined up, and they're ready to go, and I have their quotes and prices and, and.
And can they give you instructions during that extra time period? If that's what I know.
That's kind of the idea, is to open up so we can get the lifeguards all trained. I know that there's some from, you know, Thompson Lake and Asinaboy that need some training as well. As of right now, I have eight on the list that need some form of course. So, the, the idea of opening up early is yes to do that. Not only that, but because we do have restrictions, you can't run four or five swimming lessons at a time, right? You can only do two, maybe three. I'm not sure on the little pool option just yet, but it'll take longer to run those too, so.
Well, I would, I would think, but my opinion is, yeah, open it early as long as you can get, use that time, because if we're not going to open it early and just sort of have it sitting there.
Well, no.
Okay, so a lot to know, right? Okay, option one, acceptance? All in favor of that? Okay.
Sounds good?
Yep.
Sounds really good, yeah.
9.5 is Provincial Add Monthly Reports. We are actually supposed to see it. And it's easy to not understand it, so you can ask Dustin about anything you like. Sorry, motion? Teresa, second or? Andre? Discussion? Does everybody understand that? And do you want to ask any questions?
I, I kept saying balance owed, balance owed. Is that for each task, we pay that much money?
Correct. It's a weekly sample that's a requirement we submit.
And I didn't do any adding, but how much does that add up per week or month or year?
Twenty-three times fifty-two. A lot, thousand, thousand one hundred dollars.
And that's mandated by the government?
Yeah.
All in favor? Period. All right, accounts for approval. Motion? Change bill? Ray? That's Bachelor 2021 dot zero 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 six, or four zeros. Second or?
How second?
Deanna? Discussion?
I'm just wondering, Southwest Transportation, 18043, membership was six hundred bucks. That's a big one, I didn't realize.
They're all like that?
Pretty well, that's getting out there now, twelve, just a surprise, I didn't think it was, I thought it was half that much.
The, for meetings, is there one that, the, the trucking to cover and contact, so that's like, has there been any with wares as far as doing the, completing the tender that was tendered to them last year for the rail line?
I text them regularly and ask when he's going to start, and he tells me they'll start soon.
Because we're beyond the year, that was tendered out, I believe.
I think it was done in March, it was tendered out.
When it was tendered?
March of 2020, so we're approaching a year, yeah.
Yeah.
Tended to be re-tendered?
What, they were supposed to take all the gravel from the rail line?
Yeah.
Where, where? We keep half and they would keep half.
Oh, I see.
It was tendered and it was, there was just lots of issues why he wasn't starting because he was keeping the contract, and now everything's in there, nothing's happened.
It was too late for being frozen, but now, this is.
It should have been, like, now it should be done. Because spring's coming.
Yes.
Actually, that's a good idea, sending them a letter, just as a reminder.
Or maybe, we could get the administration to just give a quick call. Well, Dustin.
Or Dustin, Dustin, yeah, I guess, yeah.
He'd get on track. He'd get on track.
Is that a contract known void after a year, you're saying?
I, I don't know.
Well, we had no deadline on it.
No, there's no.
We didn't have a deadline, but I would think that there would be something that if it's not done, like.
And that means all contracts that we get something done and carry it over is non-void?
No, no.
If, if, if there's stuff, if there's progress being done, no, I don't.
I believe there was something wrote in there that either party could cancel the contract and hold the other non, non liable with notice.
I wonder if there says, if there's anything in the purchasing policy that says how long a contract is valid before any work is done?
I don't believe there was anything in.
Doesn't sound like you changed your minds, it's just never.
Yeah, it's just, just a reminder.
I know his trucks are busy hauling for Botkin right now, so I believe that was what he said last time, is once that project is done, then he was going to start.
Anything else? All in favor, the council? Nope. 12 dot one is Unfinished Businesses, all net microphone. Motion? I'll make motion, put it on the table.
Yeah.
Andre, Teresa, now we can discuss.
Thousand bucks, US for those, 1950?
Well, they're telling us that we can go elsewhere places too.
So my understanding, when we got the all net, I, I thought we were getting the microphones with it.
I did too, but I mean.
Doesn't sound like we did.
That, we spent $5,000? Does that sound great? Anybody remember?
Well, it was around, well, four thousand, it was around four thousand.
I think that's why it was budgeted, yeah, it was four thousand.
Perhaps we need to look at the initial contract and, and just dump a check that it wasn't included in it. If it was included, then it's like, okay, where is it we need it?
Yeah, and if it's not, then it's looking at version.
At least they're looking at, like, they're recommending to us to use this pile 8880 conference microphone system.
Yep. There are, there are hundreds of those on the internet, punched in that number.
Cheaper than what's they're quoting, or about the same price?
Well, it depends. I mean, that number, there's a whole range of them, and the prices vary, so. It, it, the, the report kind of falls short as to making a recommendation as to which one we should purchase. I think it requires a bit more research to get the right price, but I don't, I don't think we need to hesitate on getting it. We certainly need it.
And it says, I would also recommend that you contact the audio company retailer to try and to get some pricing too.
Yeah.
Would you have any recommendations, Ed? Because you're more creative, what's that you are?
Look, I think it was nine, nine hundred something, four each, but it's not, it's not comparable transmitters, as far as.
But will that system take a wireless? Is it Bluetooth or is it?
This is pretty.
No, it's Bluetooth.
It is Bluetooth.
I think we have to do more research on this whole setup. It's not very effective, because whether we keep spending a thousand, even a thousand, maybe.
Give it back to administration to get some more information?
Yeah.
Administration, right? Starting to cost a lot of money. All in favor of that?
What can he sound like now? I, I haven't listened to it, so I don't know.
Something better.
Because he's clearly rose, he's been up a bit more.
I don't want to scare anybody, so I don't want to.
But still, our audience shouldn't have to strain to understand what we're talking about. It should be reasonably easy and straightforward.
Okay, 12 dot two is the Heritage Board. Motion to get it on the table?
I'll make that motion.
Andre, second or?
How's the cap?
Sam? I would think that we'd want to table this to the next meeting because of what's happening next week. Makes sense.
And second or?
Yeah. Yeah. Because she just wants to know what's happening, so.
I'd just let her know that we're, we're still waiting at the end of public information.
All in favor? Okay, 12 dot three is convent meeting, just to let you know that it is next week. Hopefully, everybody can come. Invitations went out to certain people. Also, do we need a motion? Any motion?
I'll just make a motion for information.
All right, second or? Teresa, discussion. All in favor of the date?
We need to file.
Yes.
So, who'll lead that?
I'll be there.
You'll lead it?
Okay.
Was it, did he say who'll lead it?
Oh, no, I'll be there. I said, who'll lead it? L E A, L E A, D C.
Oh, yeah, hopefully all of us can make it. All right, sort of. New business, 13 dot one, property taxes, motion, put it on the table? Samuel, second or Ray? Discussion? I believe that that should go back to administration, I think they can handle it.
Out of curiosity, what do we normally do in cases like that?
Well, I think it would bypass the administration, is what happened.
Oh?
And she never even brought this one. I think you're already taking care of it, I guess.
Yeah, that's the, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that administration probably will have dealt with this. But it had to come to council because it was addressed to.
Yeah.
It's actually a refund. They've been giving a refund.
All right. 13 dot two, Gravelberg Minor Hockey Request. Motion on the table, or sorry, it is to minor ball. We were talking about the rink today, that's why. Motion on the table? Teresa, second or? Deanna, discussion.
This'll be the first time that they do, or want to do something like that, or hasn't been done before?
So, usually in the spring, they, if it's, the weather's not good in the beginning of April, May, even June, when it's raining and crappy, you know, last year or a couple of years ago, it was, just rained the whole time. They would use the rink, they would rent it. This request is to kind of, more or less, get kids physically active. It, it's led by minor ball, but in it, it says, like, it's not required that you be a ball player or participate in ball, it's just kind of like a conditioning of skills, a way to get kids involved and active. You know, some have hockey, some don't have anything, so.
You're talking about the batting range, so they have something set up so the ball stays in one place?
So, there's netting?
Yeah.
I don't know exactly. Tim Bell would be the one who would kind of lead that project. He said that he would take that on. So, it's like a, it's like a cage, but it's just made out of netting. It's, you know, seventy foot long, fourteen feet high kind of thing. And then you put up the cage, you put the batting cage right in there as well, and then you have an L screen, so whoever's pitching the balls, so to speak, or feeding the machine, it's the machine and that person's protected as well. So, again, it was an option to kind of add something new for our kids. The flesh rink puts their batting cage in the rink once it's out. Theirs is a community rink, so it's open for public just to go in and use whenever they want.
So they want to do pitching in there too, right?
So, their proposal is to do some conditioning. They want to run some clinics with softball and baseball, pitching, catching, batting clinics with those groups. But then have the machine in there, like, for training use, but also possibly an option for public to use as well.
Are, are they wanting to use the rink for no cost, or would they be paying the rent?
Well, in there, I don't.
Because it did, it did seem clear in there.
No, I don't think it was exactly discussed at no cost. They're like, their hope is to just do it at a low cost, right? So, in there where it says, information is given to Gravelberg Minor Ball to use a paliser, once registration is complete, Gravelberg Minor Ball will be able to provide a schedule of dates and times. So, I think that they're just saying, like, can we do this? And then once they figure it out, then maybe come back and request a rental rate or working with the town or something like that.
It's pretty expensive, isn't it?
Pardon me?
On a daily rate, it would be too much.
So, minor ball was charged $25 per hour when we used it for spring training.
Oh, okay. Oh, I think it's good for the kids. I, I, the idea of just getting them in there is fine with me.
And COVID regulations say, like, you can only have eight at a time, you know, like, there's still that, so the purpose of the curling rink and the skating rink, once the ice is out and, and completely out, is so that there could be like sixteen going at a time, right? Two separate facilities.
So, do we need somebody in there from the town, though, at the times they're in there?
Well, that's your decision.
Oh.
Okay, so I don't have to, it's all free.
Um, in previous years, we did it. We, they unlocked it for us and we went in.
Yeah, there's no machinery running, but you don't have to have staff there.
It would likely be considered the same as a private rental for a wedding. You don't have staff there to that.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
All right.
There's no equipment, no.
Well, I, I have no problem, don't even charge, you just make long as they keep everything clean.
But the $25 an hour sounds kind of nice, and it just takes care of any little thing.
You know, reasonable both ways, to find a doctor.
Those lights over the ice surface on both sides are absolutely absurd to have.
Yeah, and I don't think minor ball is opposed to paying and expect it for free. I think, once they figure out how many sessions, because they can only. I think, once they figure out how many sessions, because they can only run eight. It's like hockey right now. They're running seven days a week practices because you can only have eight, you know? It'd be different if you can use two hours and have twenty kids in there, but you can't. So it might get pretty expensive because there can only be eight at a time.
How long are they wanting the ice surface?
Like, an hour per session?
No, I mean, like, till May or?
Oh, um, it's in the mid-April. If the weather's good, then move outside.
Okay. Because it's gonna be a busy place changing them brine lines this summer.
Yeah. Well, and then there's no backstops right now either, so it's wait for those going.
Are there any liability concerns? I can't imagine any, but.
The rink's insured.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the rink's insured for liability purposes with that.
Well, I'm all for getting kids out there and letting them go, I'm not sure.
So you were saying that you were paying twenty-five dollars an hour last year or the year before?
Yeah.
If we charge twenty-five dollars an hour for two hours, because it's, they, they can only put so many kids in there at a time. Or less. I mean, it could be a group rate for
Do you?
You've got to cover the lights.
Do you think that it's possible to let them figure out how many?
Yeah.
Hours and days and stuff first?
Sure.
And then maybe we can just, they agree upon a number and.
I, I think we have at some point, and, and maybe Dustin can help me out with this one, but didn't we have a, an engineering study of some sort that talks about how much everything costs, including this kind of lighting and this kind of refrigerator and whatever? So we can maybe use that as a basis to find out how much those lights really do cost? And just double check and make sure we're publicly charging an appropriate amount.
Yeah, SAS Power, I believe it was SAS Power, did the calculations on the lights over the ice, so.
So we'll leave it up to Public Works to come back with, you know, the cost per hour to operate it, and then we'll just calculate the rental rate based on that and based on how much they need.
Now, I believe with the rink, we're paying a, a price no matter what's happening in that region.
Correct, there's a man charge now.
There's a man charge on it all the time.
Even when you shut off the power, it's still charging you a hundred bucks.
Really?
So that's why our rates, we went way up.
Oh.
So that's really not going to be effective. We're going to be paying a lot of the money.
Okay. So we do, we'd have to do it based on a regular rate of our power, though?
Like, to a point.
Yeah, I understand.
You let them do it for free because we're already paying for the payments to account.
And they're not going to be able to cover all the costs.
I don't have the idea of, let's see what they come up with and then go from there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think right now, in April, because it's getting our kids out.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We'll deal with the, the financial costs.
Yes. Well, I agree with you.
All in favor of the proposal? Gary? All right. Thirteen dot three.